Recording in progress.
We'll just sit right here too, so we gotta get up. That makes sense.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've got a few folks still signing up to speak, it looks like. And so we'll take a couple of extra minutes before we start the meeting.
I like this one Ben. Yeah, I don't like that.
Before we start, ladies and gentlemen, we found a key fob at the sign in table. So if anybody's missing keys, Assistant Administrator Mr. Jensen over there has it. All right. I think we're collecting a few more signatures, but I think we can go ahead and call this meeting to order. And this is the June 6, 2022 Richland County Planning Commission Meeting. Mr. Price or staff, could we just start by doing a quick roll call?
Yes, sir. All right, roll call for attendance. Branham.
President.
Dennis.
Here.
Yonki.
Here.
Carlisle. Fryerson. Metz. Grady.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Gilchrist.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. Staff, if you would please confirm the following, that in accordance with Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media persons requesting notification and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anything else from staff before we get started?
No, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Just to make sure, we did send out an amended agenda. And just want to make sure everybody's operating with the amended agenda for today.
Price, was that sent, Chairman, was that sent? Did we receive that in our, did I miss that from home or did?
You did, you received your normal packet, but we had an amendment to it and we sent that out by email.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get a copy of that.
Get some copies.
Is it? Chairman, is it major amendments to the agenda or just, what is it?
We had a motion or two added. You've been given a copy now. It says amended 6222 at the top. Is that what you have, Mr. Gilchrist?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Anybody else missing the amended agenda? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, sir.
So ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to county council as to whether to approve or deny zoning map amendments and whether to amend the text of the county's land development code. County council will conduct its own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. County, the council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month, but please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. And these are just some general guidelines. Please take note. Please turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants for any individual map amendments are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. And any citizens otherwise that are signed up to speak are allowed up to two minutes each. And we ask to reduce redundant comments if at all possible. Address your remarks to the commission and don't expect the commission to respond to questions and from the speakers in a back and forth style. That's not the purpose of this meeting. And please no audience and speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other disruptions to the meeting are permitted, nor our comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address if you come forward to speak. Abusive language is inappropriate, will not be tolerated. And then please don't voice displeasure or frustration out of recommendation while the planning commission is still conducting business. If you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff. And now we'll move to Agenda Item Three. Which if there's any motions for additions to or deletions from the agenda. And let's also deal with any motions to amend the agenda, including the consent agenda items. But first of all, I do know that we have on our agenda on item. Item A, there is a item for discussion, council motions, a motion made by Councilwoman Newton. And I believe in our materials, there was a recommendation from staff that we defer action or discussion on that motion. Can staff speak to that recommendation?
I believe that you were talking about the second package that you received, which was the briefing document for county council.
Sounds right.
Yes, during that time, that was the motion that staff made to county council. All this is gives me for the DNS committee. On this motion that we deferred, because when this first occurred, we were still going through the text amendment portion for the new land development code. And so we were going to address that at a later time. That was the purpose for.
Okay, so there's no recommendation that we remove it from today's agenda?
No, sir. That was strictly for the committee at that time. And we just wanted you to have the full package of what they received.
All right, thank you. So let's see, otherwise, Mr. Dennis, if you could help us out, which cases have a staff recommendation of approval but have people signed up to speak in opposition to the application?
All right, for the consent agenda, we need to pull case number 22007, 22009, 22011, 22012, 22013, 22014. For discussion.
So that's cases ending in 07, 09, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So that was Mr. Chair? That was all but 10 and 15, is that correct? So Items 3, Items 8.
That's right. These, let's see, we got staff recommendations for approval on both of those. Does anyone on the commission want to pull those from the consent agenda so that discussion is had on those cases? No? Okay. If there are no other motions to amend, and Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have motions. There are second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. And if we could have staff, please take a vote.
Make sure the items that you identify are for the consent agenda? Or those are cases that we will hear?
Items that we identified will be removed from the consent agenda so that we will have a discussion. Again, that's cases ending with 7, 9, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
All right, those in favor, additions and deletions to the agenda? Branham.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Carlisle. Metz. Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Onto Item Four. Staff provided commission with copies of the transcript of the commission's March 7, 2022 meeting and an excerpt, which is apparently a partial transcript of the April 1, 2022 special called meeting. Only those members present for that meeting should vote on the motion to approve the transcripts as the minutes for those meetings. But it does appear that all nine commissioners were present at both of those meetings. And since the same set of commissioners attended both meetings, we'll conduct one vote to approve the minutes unless there's an objection. No objection. So the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the March 7, 2022 and April 1, 2022 minutes as provided by staff.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. All right, moved and seconded. Staff, would you please take the vote?
Those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from March 7 and April 1? Branham.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Carlisle. Metz. Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Onto Item Five, Remapping Restart and Text Amendment Proposal Process Update, which I'll share and, you know, open to any input if there's any to be had from staff or the commission. But this is just a general process update. Last year, staff presented a proposed full replacement of land development code. After review by this commission and some modifications to the drafts along the way, county council voted to adopt the new replacement code. Included in the new land development code is a new set of zoning districts. Every parcel of land in the county that is not inside a city or town has a zoning designation sewn, assigned by the county. With the adoption of this new code, each parcel must be assigned a new zoning designation. County staff prepared a draft map. Earlier this year, the planning commission was in the midst of reviewing and considering revisions to the draft map and receiving input from the public when county council voted to direct staff to restart the map drafting process. The planning commission and county staff restarted the mapping process and began discussing potential changes to and ramifications of amendments to the land development code. The new baseline starting point for the mapping process became the zoning district translation table found in the newly adopted land development code. Staff has since created a first and second draft, neither of which has completely and exactly followed the translation table. But we've discussed some of the reasoning for that, part of which includes their desire to respond to desires expressed by the public and the commission as to certain uses and densities in certain areas. The mapping process is ongoing. It is not finished. There will be more drafts. One important element that will continue to influence the map drafting is the process of proposing amendments to the text of the newly adopted land development code. Anyone who has reviewed the agenda for today's meeting can see that I've placed two motions under Item 8. The first one is intended to facilitate the commission's future work on proposed map and code text amendments. The second motion is a specific multi-part motion to amend the text, and it relates to where townhouses and two to four family dwelling units would be permitted. I am confident in saying that there will be more motions to follow as we have additional discussion of more areas of focus already raised by the public and by commissioners. We've got a lot going on today, so let me try a little more to just talk about why our agenda is ordered as it is. We're trying to balance priorities and be considerate to as many of you as we can. It's been multiple months since we heard any individual zoning map amendment that cases related to specific pieces of property. As such, we have several on the agenda today. We will hear anyone from the public who wants to speak for or against those specific applications on a case-by-case basis, as we call them today. Before that, we're going to offer an opportunity for public input as to the broader, ongoing countywide zoning map drafting and the land development code text amendment process. If you have input as to the motions listed under Item 8 of today's agenda, that would be the time to offer that. Then shortly after this regular meeting today, we will begin another work session wherein we will continue to discuss areas of concern in our mapping and text amendment projects. There will not be public input during that session, but we will schedule time for public input at an upcoming meeting. You're welcome to watch the work session in person or on the county's YouTube channel. You're welcome to watch the work session in person or on the county's YouTube channel. We expect to conduct multiple additional planning commission meetings and work sessions before we make recommendations that we will send up to county council. Thank you for your patience, I hope that was helpful. So now we'll proceed to the public input as to the general remapping and text amendment process. Mr. Dennis, if you would, please call the name of the first person signed up. And again, just as a reminder to anyone who speaks, you have two minutes to speak, and we ask you please state your name and address before you begin. Mr. Dennis?
All right, so the first person for the public input relating to remapping and text amendment proposal process to date, we have Michael Hagler.
And staff, if you'll please keep the timer for us.
Actually, two of us for this, and Ina is right after me, we're gonna switch order if you don't mind.
Go ahead and give us your name and your address, ma'am.
My name is Ina Fort, F O R T. My address is eighteen oh one Carl, C A R L, Road in the Elma Bow subdivision, zip is two nine two ten. And I'm just here as the president of the homeowners association for two neighborhoods, for Elma Bow, where I reside, and also for Huffman Heights, who is our neighbor neighborhood. We have a joint association. And I'm just here to say that we wanted to thank you for all the diligence and the hard work, and you must live on Advil. I can't imagine the scope of this kind of of a project. And we have been treated so respectfully and so patiently. And I just feel very strongly that we need to say thank you for helping us understand the process, for helping us, giving us an avenue to tell you the real worries that we had. And our neighborhoods are probably fifty to seventy years old, and a lot of the original homeowners are still living there. So some of the of the mapping was really worrisome to us, but we've been treated very kindly. Mr. Price, been around a long time. He was so wonderful to help our attorney, help us understand exactly what was going on. And we just wanted to say thank you, and we appreciate your considering making these changes for us. We just wanted to to say we appreciate the courtesy that we've been treated with and the fact that we feel like you've listened very carefully to us. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Totally unexpected, the way to start this meeting. I just, let me just briefly remind everybody, yeah, everyone here serving on this commission, it's through an application process. We are vetted by county council rules and appointments committee, and then council votes to appoint us all. This has been a lot, yeah, and a lot more than I think any of us expected. We're giving it our best efforts. Thanks for recognizing the time, it's unpaid, it's unreimbursed. I spent three and a half hours driving around the county Sunday looking at the eight pieces of property up on the agenda today. And, you know, that's just out of my pocket. So thanks, thanks for the recognition, we're doing our best.
My name is Michael Hagler, I'm also on the board before Elma Bow, Huffman Heights Neighborhood Association. But we really feel like we're here representing all the neighborhoods, the single-family detached neighborhoods that have been around for fifty and seventy years. So we appreciate that. Specifically, we're speaking to the items under item eight, and particularly motion B, the upcoming motion B at the end of the agenda. And in support of that, and thank you for your efforts at listening to us back in March, when that was a long day of testimony from the neighbors. And I'd also like to recognize, if I could, the neighbors from Elma Bow, Huffman Heights, if you could stand and join us in applauding you guys and supporting your ongoing efforts with this process. So thank you so much.
Next, we have Jennifer Manki.
And could you hold just one moment, we got an audio problem. I think we're gonna try to make sure you're live there, so anyone watching online can hear you.
Okay, Jennifer Manki, three twenty Clearview Drive, Hopkins. I've been coming to county council meetings for about six years altogether, initially against the sewer project, knowing that development was on its way once that transpired. And of course, we lost that one. But I appreciate the fact that at one of our earlier meetings with you, you seem to take our conversation under your belt and defer for a while. I want to, I would like to hearken back to a friend of mine who was a surveyor, and he loved his job because he was out in the woods all the time, surveying, and then he realized what was happening because of his job and took heart and changed his profession because it was not what he intended. And I'm hoping that you will think about the consequences to the farmers in our area. What you're doing so far does not affect me, except that I think that land is finite, and when you determine that it is all gobbled up, does affect us. And we would like you to stay as close to how it is now for the farmers as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person to speak is Willis, I cannot read your last name, but from Hopkins, South Carolina?
But I think I'm gonna pass.
You'll pass? Mike Sloan?
I'm Mike Sloan, I reside at fourteen thirty Wonder Drive, Chapin, South Carolina. I'm here today because, number one, we've been involved with county council all the way back into the eighties and nineties. Beautiful thing was put up there at one time behind y'all. Uniquely urban, uniquely rural. We don't have that back there now. I think this is due to the fact that we need to reconsider some things. I don't know who's pushing this zoning issue as hard as they are, but I would like to say that us folks that acquired properties here in Richland County, we had certain rights that were given to us with that property when we purchased it. And this, what we have now is taking away some of those rights. And I just don't think that someone can come in and take our rights, and I use that term "take" because that's the key here. Take our rights, we're the ones that paid for it, we once paid the taxes, we keep it up, everything, insurance, all and all. And then we're told after we purchase it down the road, we lose certain rights to the property that were once there. And I would like for this commission to consider, don't remove those rights. Those rights are very precious. Two things you don't do, you don't mess with a man's family, you don't mess with his property. So I'm going to encourage you today to look at those rights when you look at zoning. Because when you rezone something and you take those rights away, that's a taking, under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment. I know it may not have been tested, but maybe it's time to test it if that happens. So please take that in consideration, I applaud you for your efforts. You got a tough job, you got this thing jumped in your, dropped in your lap, let's face it. But you gotta look out for the rights. Don't take personal, we start taking personal property rights. Folks, that's not government anymore. We were given those rights when we purchased the property, and those rights need to remain with the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Clay Parker.
Thank you, my name's Clay Parker. I live at sixty-two oh eight Lower Richland Boulevard in Hopkins, near the Harriet Barber House over there, love the neighborhood. I had a very fiery speech prepared a while back, and after, after finding our more recent restart map here, you've stolen some of my fire. And that is because, I think this is a great step in the right direction. The fire in the speech was because the original map really did take away the voice of the individual property owners reassigned zoning that we didn't ask for and we didn't want. And the restart map, oh two, is very much a step in that direction. And I appreciate all of you listening to the people in this room and support the direction of this. So I just wanted to stand and speak in support of that, the direction we're headed, and thank all of you for your diligence. Thank you very much.
Sean Greenwood?
Thank you very much, my name is Sean Greenwood. I'm the city administrator for the city of Forest Acres, and I guess City Hall would be the address I'm representing today. Kind of the same tone, you know, initially, when we came out and spoke at the last meeting, we're very concerned about the changes that were happening in the unincorporated donut holes that are encompassed within the city of Forest Acres, obviously a longstanding, existing residential area. And we just would, you know, ask y'all, as you go through this process, y'all, y'all keep those kind of areas in mind, and keep in mind that some of the cities, while you're, you're working on unincorporated areas, a lot of those areas are fully surrounded by existing cities like Forest Acres and some of the other cities in the county. So it's not that these areas are outside of the cities, they're really inside the cities, but they're just unincorporated. So we appreciate the work y'all are doing thus far, and we think you guys are moving along the track that we can agree on and protect the character of the existing built environment with these changes. And we're happy to help and provide any kind of assistance that we can during the process if y'all have any questions. Thank you.
Mark Herschenberger? Herschberger?
Very close, sir. Good afternoon, gentlemen, my name is Mark Herschberger. My wife and I have lived at fifteen Sweet Bay Drive for forty-one years. In October twenty twenty-one, my property was zoned RSLD, which prohibited certain types of construction, including mobile homes and multifamily dwellings, such as quadruplexes. In November twenty twenty-one, county council changed that, authorizing mobile homes and multifamily dwellings across the street from me. My wife and I were distressed. I note that your agenda indicates you're considering striking multifamily dwellings as a category, but apparently you remain intent upon introducing distributing mobile homes in my area, which for untold generations has been characterized by detached single-family dwellings, subdivisions of detached single-family dwellings. Gentlemen, to some of us, the LDC seems to be the product of staff work and an outside consultant. What I ask of you is to keep in mind, there appears to be no resident property owner in Richland County, South Carolina, whoever said, please do this, this would be a great idea. Many people here have very similar or analogous situations. I ask you, gentlemen, find out what your constituents want, revise the text of the code, the specific code language, which affects the lives and properties of the people in this room. Give us back the protections we had under the old code. Y'all have been handed a hot potato by county council. I respect and admire the work you have undertaken voluntarily or otherwise. Finally request, gentlemen, please stop drawing the maps. Wait until you have identified the correct text, the correct legal restrictions and permissions on the use of land, then draw your pictures. All those maps do is set a clock running. It starts the clock ticking for the effective date of the LDC. When you fix the code, you've done it well. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
James Ewing?
Gentlemen, I'm Jim Ewing, I live at five Trotwood Drive in Columbia. I'm a retired physician, my wife and I moved to Columbia in nineteen ninety-nine. We rented for a year, and looked all over the greater Columbia area and purchased a home in Trotwood subdivision, and we love it there. It's an economically diverse area, there's a lot of retired people, a lot of retired military, some still working, some still have children. We're a racially diverse area. We have twenty-four families identified as black, twenty-two as white, four Filipinos, and we have one community home with assisted living with four residents. I share my neighbor's concern that this code will adversely affect the quality of life and property values in my subdivisions and in other areas. But admitting multifamily dwellings from the R two zoning category is a step in the right direction, but it does not create the protections that I had under RSLD zoning. Mobile homes are inappropriate in my neighborhood and in many other neighborhoods. Planning commission has the opportunity to correct some serious errors made by county council last November, but it is essential that you take a fresh look at these issues. Your mission is not to salvage the work of county staff. I recommend that you slow down the process, there is no clock ticking unless it was invented by county staff. I strongly recommend a request that you stop all work on the so-called zoning maps until a planning commission has reached agreement as to what zoning categories should be used. You must decide and state in plain English what construction types will be permitted or prohibited in specific areas. Only then will it make any sense to try to determine where the new category should be located. You may decide to reinstate some categories such as RSLD, which were lost in the LDC. Thank you, gentlemen.
Jay Rick Wilson?
Good afternoon, thank you for hearing me. When I first got here today, I was a little bit worried. Was not a female on this panel. And I remember being raised, my mother listened to me a lot better than my father. My, my wife, she listens a lot better than my children, our children, than I listen to them. Yet I'm impressed by all the people applauding you for listening. And so I have some hope, because I found out about this process pretty late. But I'm very concerned. The LDC adopted in November twenty-one potentially harms my quality of life, my family's quality of life, our property. I've been told that county staff worked on it for five years. Then county council approved it. Only then was the public informed, that's what I'm concerned about. I do not know who will benefit from the LDC, but it will not be me or my family. It would have been appropriate to inform the taxpaying residents, I think, of Richland County about the process as it was developed. In some ways, it feels like it's been sprung upon us. Originally, I purchased the property with the understanding that mobile homes and multifamily dwellings were restricted in our area. The first home that I owned was a mobile home when I was twenty years old. But we didn't have it pulled on its wheels down into the neighborhood where I was raised. They were all single dwellings, had been there established for a long time. I don't want that to happen in my neighborhood. I invite the commission members to physically visit our part of town. My neighbors and I would be glad to show you around. We're diverse, we're a happy neighborhood, we love Columbia. We live here for a reason, it's a beautiful place.
Thank you, sir.
And we don't want it to change so drastically that it changes who we are.
Thank you for being here, that's your time.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have David Williams?
Yes, my name is David Williams, I live at seven Candlewood Lane in the Trotwood subdivision. Now, I'll try not to be repetitious, but I fully support the remarks of the four or five past people who have already given your remarks today. I moved to where I am in Trotwood thirty years ago, so I could be near work. But before I did that, I very thoroughly researched the zoning. And I found RSLD, and I read the zoning regulations thoroughly. And I thought, this is the kind of place I want to live, because I have stability. Well, now consideration is being given to eliminating the RSLD. And I ask you to please reconsider that and not do that because I think I lose a lot as to a lot of other Richland County residents. In our neighborhood, there's some lots which if you say, the, the staff will say, well, I, when I'm not affected. But if a house burns to the ground or somebody decides to raise their house and, and subdivide, you can put two and three homes in the space that we now have one home in. And I, I hope that will become unacceptable with you and you'll not allow that to happen. I feel that the proposed changes to eliminate RSLD, and it's kind of a strong word. Richland County is in effect betraying me and a lot of homeowners by considering doing such a thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Pam Salkin House.
Hey, I'm Pam Salkin House and I reside at 1944 Marina Road in Irma. Last month I submitted a no rezoning petition to county council. It was signed by approximately 1,400 of my neighbors in the unincorporated areas of Valentine, White Rock and Chapin. I am here today to, to show support for item 8BI that would, that would amend the land development code and remove townhouses, two-family, three-family and four-family dwellings from R2, R3 and R4 zoning codes. Thank you for listening to us. We don't want to all live in the city. Let Richland County be diverse. We like diversity in this county. And we, the diversity helps maintain the current character of our single family neighborhoods. Thank you again for listening to us.
Next, we have Donna Cole.
Good afternoon. My name is Donna Cole. I reside at 209 Immunity Road in Chapin, South Carolina. First of all, I'd like to thank you for listening to the voices of Richland County residents and reevaluating your approach to the 2021 land development code text and rezoning map. Because our current infrastructure is inadequate to support the high density initially planned. We are encouraged that you extended effort, that your extended efforts will provide an improved approach toward diverse and healthy community development in support of addressing the expressed concerns of Richland County citizens. I speak in alliance of the Marina Road, Johnson Marina Road and surrounding residents within Chapin, White Rock, Valentine, who showed strong opposition to the initial rezoning approach with 1,400 petition signatures. We are in support of other items for action under 8B, numbers one, two, three and four, and urge you to approve these recommended amendments in support of the livelihood of our local farming communities and true single family designation. Be our fiduciary by putting the welfare of Richland County citizens first with a duty to preserve good faith and trust in our government processes. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Next, we have Melinda Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Kelly. I'm with the Finkel Law Firm, 1201 Main Street, Columbia and 4,000 Paper Place Charleston. Before I mention anything about specific properties, well, I represent property owners who have, one, Dr. Serbin has a property on Horseshoe and we're supportive of the new restart district, which is INS for 17, 1721 Horseshoe. And then I have a client who has 12 properties. And before talking about any of those, I wanted to ask something or really mention that in looking at the new 0.2 restart map, it was very different and hard to figure out. Um, I've been working with maps for many, many, many years and zoning. And the first go around had a place where you could put in the address and the TMS number and find out what the recommended zoning is. This one didn't have streets and you couldn't really do that. And so it took quite a while to figure out. And I think I've figured out the 12 of my other client. And, um, and that's the C.L. Corley Lawn and Construction Company, Kevin Corley. One of his properties in particular, 7501 Fairfield Road is the only RU that's between Light Industrial and what I think is going to be called EMP now. And, um, it's listed, um, still as RU. The map had a legend, or sorry, the equivalency table had a legend or had an equivalency for RU that had AG and HM, I believe. Those were not on the legend of the new maps online. So it was very hard to figure out what that property would be recommended. And so I'd like to find out about that, um, the, as well as the other RU's that he has. 1820 Crane Church Road, 1316 Corley Ford, another one on Crane Church without an address, 1812.
Thank you very much.
Rockington. Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Murphy.
Good afternoon. Kim Murphy, 154 Old Laurel Lane, Chapin, South Carolina. At the risk of sounding redundant, thank you very much. I hope you don't mind that redundancy and really appreciate the effort you're putting into this and listening to the constituents. Um, but I do have a couple of suggestions. Number one, you may not know this, but the base map, our current zoning is not on your, uh, planning website page, all kinds of other maps, but not our current zoning. And that might be helpful to see. Um, also with your proposed maps or, or your working maps, point one and point oh two, or point two, it might be helpful to put the equivalency zoning classifications in parentheses next to the, um, proposed zoning classification. So we kind of know what you're working with. Um, and, and I also noticed while looking at the GIS map for our current zoning, the zoning classifications or zoning districts are in certain colors, but they're not the same colors as what you're working with on your working maps. I don't know if you can, um, use the same colors. It would be helpful to see when you're comparing one map to the next and how it affects things. Um, and it might also point out, I, I know with the equivalency chart, it said that rural was the same as AG, HM, RT. But if you look at the proposed map that went out back in March, you'll see rural is not limited to, uh, AG, AGM and RT. That you may have, uh, properties zoned possibly to 12 units per acre, properties that were once rural. So having the, um, maps, the same color, if you are going to use maps, I do agree with, um, Mr. Herschberger, that addressing the code first, but a good starting point is to look at our base map, which, which you are doing. But if you could, um, consider using the same colors for those zoning classifications for comparison sake, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last person we have is Les Tweed.
My name is Les Tweed. I live at 111 Saratoga Road, Valentine, South Carolina. And I'm president of Valentine Community Association. I too am here to, to thank you. When I saw the motions listed for today, I was quite, uh, pleased. And I feel that thanking planning staff and the commission for bringing, you know, these motions to a vote is a demonstration that all the citizens of Richland County can feel comfortable that you've been chosen well. It demonstrates that you care about the community and it shows your intelligence and understanding as to how devastating it would be to move forward without enacting these text improvement changes. And approval today will prove to the citizens that by being involved, expressing their concerns and by working side by side with local government, positive changes can be made for future development and still maintain a good quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that was the last person for the part six of our.
Anybody else here in the room who wanted to speak on the broad remapping and text amendment? Uh, we got a gentleman over here. Go ahead and come onto the podium. Give us your name and address, please.
Corey Swindler, 501 Beach Branch Drive. Apologize a little late. Um, I appreciate y'all's efforts. I understand that this has been put on you. But quite frankly, everyone up here and everyone in this room and everyone in Richland County needs to realize that we have a sincere, severe problem with the lack of density, the lack of housing. If all of us in here continue to have children, where are they going to live? The majority of people that'll stand up here and talk to you are short sighted. They don't want something dense across their street. Well, the farmer 50 years ago didn't want them to move in either. Well, we've got to do something. We've got to be proactive. There aren't places to live. The housing is going through the roof. I have a 10-year-old son. When he graduates college, I would love for him to be able to afford a home. He's not going to be able to. We need to proactively plan certain areas to where we can increase density in the right way, strategic way. The planning commission, the staff, as well as many other people like this consultant, have degrees in planning, have looked at Atlanta and other areas and how they did growth responsibly. We're not the first one. Let's follow the good things they did, not do the bad things they did and not be short sighted and selfish to say no one else can live near me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just come on down to the podium.
Surprise.
He'll be determined.
Mr. Branham, thank you very much for going on site when we were having the Ridge Road debacle about two years ago. You were one of the few people that actually drove out and looked at the situation. We all applauded you. Um, I am a farmer. I have several hundred acres out in Hopkins, South Carolina. And I'd like you to draw your attention to something very simple, very critical. I believe there is a lack of understanding within Richland County planning about water. Uh, I'm on Cedar Creek. Cedar Creek goes into the Congaree National Park. There are some high density developments and plant high density developments upstream. If you went and looked at those high density developments, by the nature of high density, people throw crap in, I hope that's not a bad word, in the streams. There's runoff of petroleum products, chemicals, pesticides and lots of other stuff that come down to my property through our pond and then end up in the national park. When I asked about it previously, two administrators in Richland County Council, they simply point upstream to the Corps of Engineers. I've had to do a, 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 a FOIA in order to find out what the heck is going on. I would ask you to please, I'm about done, to get your administrators to either get a grip on the water situation. I'm not talking about above ground necessarily. I'm talking about below the ground because people in rural South Carolina, we depend on the wells. And once it's polluted, it's over. And we have a sewer that keeps blowing out right there at Green Lakes. And this, and the sanitation engineer told me the system was not engineered to hold all the density that we now have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a price?
You gotta wait till the very end.
Yeah. Sir, sir, can, can I get your name?
Yeah, Whitner Slagsball, uh, Harman Road.
All right. Thank you. Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Uh, my name is Matthew Cook. I represent the Manufactured Housing Institute of South Carolina. We're based here in Columbia and represent a number of different companies and, uh, the manufacturers, communities and as well as retailers around the state. I just wanted to, um, say, I appreciate the work that you're doing. I appreciate the goals and objectives of, of your, of your development plan. And, um, we're coming in a little bit late to the conversation. I understand that. But I'm, uh, looking forward to working with you. I listened and paid attention to your last meeting on the 18th. And I know there's a lot of questions and, and discussion about what, um, you need to do to try to address manufactured housing. And we certainly play a big role in creating affordable housing and providing affordable housing for people in Richland County as well as throughout the state. And we want to ensure and maintain that we, um, have that opportunity and that people have the opportunity to purchase our homes and place them in, in the, um, in the county and specifically as, as you're looking to address density and, and some of the different areas that we can work with you going forward and, and try to answer some of those questions and try to ensure that we can maintain that, that our presence here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room want to be heard on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Danielle Holmes and I live at 11 Trotwood. And I speak with my, um, with my neighbors over here from the Trotwood community. I understand that a lot of us are concerned about density and housing here in the, um, in the Richland County area. But I don't think that we need to, um, put more manufactured homes up. And I particularly don't want them in my neighborhood. What I think we need to do if we're really concerned about the housing crisis that we're having is to build some, uh, singular family homes, uh, for people that cannot afford them. We're in a, um, a crisis right now here in the United States of America. This is a artificial inflation that we're under here right now. And we've just gone through COVID. People are not able to afford housing. They're not able to afford food and a lot of other things. But I don't think we need to crowd our neighborhoods with manufactured housing. I don't think that we need to populate, um, single family, um, areas with more multiple, um, family dwellings. People want to live in affordable housing, but they want their own properties. So please don't put people in all these, um, uh, manufactured housing. And please don't put them in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Now we'll, uh, go ahead and move on to, um, agenda item seven, which is to consider individual map amendment applications.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Cook. Earlier when we did the additions and deletions to the agenda, we still need to vote on the consent agenda items as well. So we would just simply have removed other than, um, 7A and then 7A3 and 7A8. The others would have been removed from that consent agenda. The others would still need to be voted on as part of the consent agenda. So that would be eight, or excuse me, 7A, 7B3 and 7B8 would be voted on as part of the consent agenda.
Thank you for calling. That's our attention. Do I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist. Second, is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Grady and, uh, staff, would you please take the vote?
All right. Uh, Branham.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Yonki.
Hi.
Carlisle. Metz. Grady.
Hi.
Taylor.
Hi.
Gilchrist.
Hi.
Uh, voting unanimous.
Very much. So, uh, now I'd move on to, uh, presentation for case 22 dash 007 MA. Staff, if you would present that case.
Here. I'll have anybody signed up for that one.
So go ahead. So case, for case 22 dash 007 MA, the applicant is Lucky Daddy. The location is 116 Beatty Downs Road. The applicant is asking to rezone um, just like a little less than, um, um, point 25 hundredths of an acre from RMHD to OI. Um, staff recommends disapproval of this request. And it's in the conclusion, but just to speak on it, while the residential high density future land use designation encourages a mixture of residential areas supported by neighborhood commercial uses, the desired development for commercial development is recommended to be located in activity centers and in mixed use corridors. The proposed location of the request does not meet these location guidelines and can be, can be deemed to be an encroachment into the residential development pattern of the area. and can be deemed to be an encroachment into the residential development pattern of the area. For these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Surprised. If it's less than two acres and there's nothing contiguous of the same requested district, how is it before us?
There within the current land development code, there are some provisions in place that allow, if you are adjacent to certain use type of zoning designations, that you can ask for requests. So for this particular one, under Section 26-52 to be an addition of OI zoning contiguous to an existing commercial or residential zoning district. So because of its proximity to a residential zoning designation, it is eligible to request a OI zoning.
Thanks. Any discussion from the commission on this case? Or any questions, other questions for staff? Grady.
Have any, so I gather we don't have anything from the applicant in terms of contribution or testimony. Do we have any? Is there a description of the current?
I'm sorry, can you repeat this? Or you kind of went out.
Yeah, I was asking if there was any sort of detail that could be provided on the existing use of the parcel or any other context that would be helpful that was not provided as part of the staff report.
So currently, you're talking about the current use of the property?
It's just a residential use, Dr. Grady. It's, I think most of the properties located on, or most of the properties on this development, and I think that one in particular as well, it's either going to be typically a duplex, triplex, or some type of other multifamily use as well.
That's what I saw when I dropped down, drove down in there Sunday was just, everything was very uniform, but same probably two to four family dwelling unit. But it's zone four.
Chairman, Mr. Chair, entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
I would like to make a motion that we send case number 22-007 MA forward to counsel with recommendation of disapproval.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that we send case 22-007 MA to counsel with the recommendation of disapproval. Staff, would you please take a vote on the motion?
Those in favor of the motion? Branham.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Yonke.
Aye.
Carlisle. Metz. Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Right, so the motion for disapproval is unanimous?
Thank you. Next. Next case, please, staff.
All right, the next case is 22-009 MA. The applicant is Josh Brown. The applicant is requesting to rezone one acre from rural to general commercial. Location is at 341 Western Lane. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. But this is one of those, we principally recommend disapproval of the request because it would not be consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan for the neighborhood medium density land use designation. However, the request to GC would be compatible with the adjacent land uses nearby along Western Lane and Howard Kugler Road where industrial and commercial uses are present. So, Mr. Chair, I'll see if I can beat you to your next question. That why this was eligible to come before us? Again, another provision within our code in which the zoning administrators to look at in the rural zoning designation and make a determination of if it's primarily an industrial use, a commercial use, or residential use. And so the adjacent parcel to the requested site, while it is on rural, it does have an industrial use, industrial uses on the site. So thus, this was eligible to come in for a GC rezoning request.
I want the one that's to the east. Is it PDD?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes, it's PDD, which is the same thing with rural. We have to make a determination on what that use is. So it's either, you know, commercial, industrial, or residential.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Comments, discussion?
We do, the applicant did sign up.
Okay.
To speak.
The applicant's here. Thank you. Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm Josh Brown, husband and employee of lawyer Lisa. Okay? So, AKA Lisa Hosteller Brown, okay? 1082 Howard Kugler Road. Our property that we currently had our business at is down off of Fernandina Road that got eminent domain by the Carolina Crossers Project, which is, mind you, in Lexington County. We were trying to relocate this business to dislocation in Richland County. So we are requesting the GC. We already went through all the zonings right next door to it. It's along I-26. I think we all know and realize it shouldn't be rural. I mean, along I-26, nobody's going to build a house along I-26 on Western Lane there. And we are requesting it be changed to GC so we can move our business there.
Questions for Mr. Brown? What do you have next door to that parcel?
There's a concrete plant on one side, and then there's a office building similar to what we're intending on the other side.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may, so I guess this question is for staff. So how's that happen?
What do you mean by that, sir?
On one side of the facility, it's a concrete facility that you mentioned. And on the other side, there's an office building and this particular, so help me understand how that.
Um, I guess the best way to put it is, again, there was Mr. Cook, we'll talk about that later. Mr. Cook, he's getting his in today. We, the properties that you're looking at with the offices are and also with the concrete plant is on PDD. And I can't point to something in the code, so it's kind of more of an opinion. But back in the day when these were rezoned, it was a big comfort level with single use PDDs, which you knew exactly what was going to be there. And so a lot of those got approved. So if your question is how did those get there? Location, probably, I would, I would wager that there was very little opposition on that time, especially when you consider where it is. And because it was just going to be a single use that was locked in through the PDD process, it got approved.
Chairman, I won't ask any more questions about that right now, in case anybody else has any questions. Love to play with that one for just a minute, though.
Anyone else have questions for staff or comments? This Western Lane is definitely a frontage road. I drive it every day. And it is an interesting mix of uses along that road. I-26, as was referenced, is being widened through there. I think it looks like they're even shifting Western Lane further away from I-26 to maybe create more room for the interstate there. So yeah, yeah, you got a concrete facility right there. You got some large buildings that have, seem like they have mixed uses. I drove through there on Sunday. And it's a couple of buildings that seem like they get used as churches on Sunday and then businesses maybe through the week. So yeah, it's interesting and varied uses along that road. All right, well, does anyone have a motion? If not, I'll make a motion.
I got one question. How far away is this from the priority investment area? Do we know? I was trying to find it, but I couldn't really figure it out. It looked like it was very close. I couldn't tell if it was in it or like right across the street.
It's a fair ways away, Mr. Dennis. So which one are you referencing? The Irma prairie activity center or the one that's at the Peak Interchange?
I thought it was the one over there near Irma.
So it's, I'd say it's roughly halfway between the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was definitely not in it, but it's, okay. I was trying to find a little more finite, but I'm good with it.
All right, so if no one else got a motion, I'll make a motion to send this case 22-009 MA to counsel with the recommendation of approval because the request to GC would be compatible with adjacent land uses nearby along Western Lane and Howard Kugler Road where industrial and commercial uses are present, as was noted by staff in their report.
Chair, without seconding that.
It's seconded. Staff, would you please case?
All right, those in favor of the recommendation for approval of case 22-009? Branham.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Yonke.
Aye.
Carlisle. Metz. Grady.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Gilchrist.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous?
Hey, and again, we are a recommending body, so the case will go up to the county council for a final vote. Next case, staff, when you're ready.
Next item is case 22-011 MA. The applicant is Oliver Mack. The location is at 6108 Bluff Road. The applicant is requesting rezone three parcels, which come out to about 4.7 acres from rural, from rural commercial and rural to light industrial. Staff recommends disapproval of this request primarily because it's not in compliance with the recommendations of the comp plan, so that not consistent with those objectives. Per the plan, rural activity center should incorporate, should incorporate context sensitive designs that locate more intensive uses away from adjacent residential properties and protect these residential properties from negative impacts such as light, sound, and traffic, which typically are part of the light industrial request. I'm going to give, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval.
Hey, any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Okay, is the applicant present? Yes, sir. Please come on down. Give us your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Oliver Mack. I'm with Mack's Towing. My address is 6108 Bluff Road. And I'm the owner. All right, the purpose of changing it from rural commercial to light industrial is because right now it's set up as a, really a mobile towing. It's not set up as a towing establishment. Because it's just like mobile, you just go out and tow and you just, you don't have an establishment. That's what the RC, you can't store any vehicle. That's what I'm getting at. And I want to have a legit business like all the other tow companies, because right now we're not legit. Every business in Richland County, I mean, the rural Richland County is not legit because they can't store vehicles. And I want to change, I know the concerns. The first concern y'all are going to have is that when you got a towing business, you're storing vehicles, it becomes a salvage yard. That's not the case. Because you can put in control measures, you can do a TR to, to, to get rid of those vehicles, like salvage and stuff like that with a DMV. And also you can do a public auction through the marriage court. And also you can do an online auction. So that, I know that's, that's probably the main concern. And in order to have my, to have a legit business, I have contracts with Highway Patrol and Richland County Sheriff Department. And sometime we get wrecked vehicles and we get vehicles like violation. You got to store the vehicles. I mean, it's no way around. And I never had any complaints. I've been there like 10 years. Nobody, all, everybody in the community says it's a great thing. And because you don't have anything out in that area, you know what I'm saying? You got the National Park and all that. They come up. They tow vehicles for them and we work on their vehicles and all that kind of stuff. So I never had a complaint for 10 years. And I just want to have a legit business like all the business in the incorporated areas and city and stuff like that. I want to have that type of business also, being in an unincorporated area. And basically, that's, that's all I want.
Thank you.
Chairman. Sir, so you are currently operating?
Yeah, I'm currently a towing business, but I'm not legit. I mean, none of them are legit. You got like four businesses down there. Because of the rule saying that.
Sir, how long have you been at the location?
10 years.
10 years, okay. Right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Price, can you talk to us a little bit about, you know, current business practice as reported versus the current zoning designation, RC, at the location across the street? I understand it's not the subject location.
Yeah, so the towing business is allowed in a few of our commercial zoning designations. But again, it is a towing business. You can get in the car, but you take it elsewhere. But in order to have the vehicles on site for storage, regardless of if it's a day or if it's long term, that has to be in more of an industrial zoning designation. So either the M1, which is of course now an eligible zoning designation, LI, or even HI.
Any other questions, comments, or motions on this case?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
I have one for the applicant. Is that your residence next door? Okay.
The answer by the applicant was yes, that is his residence next door. A motion? If not, I can make a motion. All right, I'll make this motion that we send case number 22-011 MA to counsel with recommendation of disapproval for the reasons cited by staff in the report. Is there a second to that motion? No second. Okay, no second on the motion. So motion fails for lack of second.
I have a question.
Senator Taylor.
For staff, if the concern is to be legitimate, is there any other recourse for him? Because I mean, looking at the map, it looks like there's vehicles there now. I mean, so I'm not sure. Is there any other recourse for him to, as he describes it, to become legitimate?
From a zoning standpoint, either rezone the property or bring the property into compliance by removing the vehicles and operate under what the rural commercial zoning designation allows you to do. or bring the property into compliance by removing the vehicles and operate under what the rural commercial zoning designation allows you to do.
All right, well, so, uh, a- anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just before we. So you mentioned that there are vehicles on the property now, is that right?
Correct.
That are being stored on the property now?
Yes.
So is that operating in a nonconforming use?
No, sir. It's operating in an illegal use.
What's the difference?
Nonconforming is something that was legally established and due to actions by the government, fitted by text amendment or map amendment would no longer make that a conforming use. However, in this case, that's not what has occurred. The property was zoned rural commercial and allowed for certain uses. And I guess over time, activities to the property have made them a legal. That's why I believe this is why this request is before you at this time.
But you would agree to that. So probably a real stretch on, you know, nonconforming side. I mean, a lot of times we hear very similar situations that would certainly fall in line as, as a nonconforming use. Am I right?
If this was a nonconforming use, then the rezoning request wouldn't be necessary because a nonconforming use is allowed to remain as they were. Just they can't expand what they're allowed to remain as they were.
One of the things that I think this commission might want to look at particularly now that I'm leaving, um, but it's, this might be something that, that for future discussions, uh, to really redefine what nonconforming is. I think in, in, in the, in the, in the public, there, there's a very big mixed conception about what that is. And as a consequence of that, there are folk who, who conduct business, uh, without in some cases seeking a zoning, uh, approval, uh, all but to find out later that they're operating in a nonconforming use.
Illegally.
Well, I, I get it, but, but.
I just want to make sure we put it out there. So again, if this was a con- nonconforming use, doesn't need to come before the planning commission unless there was going to be a change. It would be allowed to remain.
Right, no, I get it, right.
In, in cases where you do have someone coming in, uh, we want to really get into this part, but if they have been operating illegally, then what they're asking now is just for you to make it legal for them.
I get it. I, I just was curious whether or not there was some synergy there with the nonconforming designation. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Uh, yes, Mr. Yaki.
For the staff. All right. In our materials on page thirty-one, future land use map, we're zoomed out. But it looks like the arrow is pointed to a rural activity center. Can you define a rural activity center for me?
Sir. So if you look on page, um, twenty-six of your packet, uh, we do put, put some of the plans and policies for a, um, rural activity center um, in there. And just for the record, I'll go ahead and read what we have within the, the, um, your agenda package. Says land use and design and rural activity center provides opportunities at rural, cross rural locations for commercial development to serve the surrounding rural community. This can include small feed stores, restaurants, convenience grocery markets and similar smaller scale retail uses. These are not mixed use developments and should not include residential development. However, small bed and breakfast or other small scale tourism operations are appropriate. So just, uh, just going by the land use and design as stated for the rural activity center, um, you know, one recurring theme seems to be smaller scale. And so it's either retail, um, type uses or even smaller scale tourism operations. Um, I don't believe in this particular case, if we're just looking at this, you know, again, one of the things we've as a staff tried not to look at is the actual uses with current, we just look at the zoning for the property, treat it almost vacant. But in this particular case, uh, a towing business, especially with outside storage, uh, would not be deemed to be smaller scale retail. It's not a retailer use either.
Chairman, tell me.
Yes. Gilchrist.
So this company is operating illegally. Is that right? That's what you said to me earlier.
With, with the outdoor storage part, yes, sir.
So have we cited him as operating as illegal in the county?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Hey, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, our officer, and I think as Mr. Mack alluded to, that, um, our code enforcement officers have been in the areas, especially rural areas, give notices of violations for these uses.
All three parcels currently zoned R C?
No, sir.
So one?
If you, if you look on page thirty-six of your, thirty, excuse me, page thirty of your packet, you'll see that the back portion where you see that essentially the max towing, um, that is zone rural commercial. And the other piece is a zone rural.
I'm guessing the, what was it? Priority investment area is probably related to the fact that, uh, Congaree National Park entrance is in that area? Do you know if that had anything to do with?
Do you mean the rural activity center? There's.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this would be, I think, partly why that is considered a rural activity center is it's one of the, quote unquote, gateways to the national park.
Okay, so anything else? We get a motion, we? We have to defer the matter? You know, I, I made a motion and it, and it failed for lack of second.
I mean, moving to defer, I'm not sure if you're going to get any more information at your, at your next meeting. Again, try not to speak, you know, when you're deliberating on these items, but this is not, um, the first time we've kind of run into something similar to this. So one of the things as a staff we look at is we treat this area just as an undeveloped piece of property. We don't look at the use that's on there when it comes to us making a recommendation. So the question is just because if this was just a wooded area of land and they came in and made the same request, would you feel that this is an appropriate location for light industrial? I think some of the things that can be confusing is when, you know, applicant comes in, they're kind of there and you're looking at it, the current use on the property. And in some ways you're trying to figure, how can we fix this? Um, again, right now we're just looking strictly at the zoning for that area, not necessarily can we bring something into compliance?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, I kind of agree with Mr. Price there. Like I looked through everything. I looked through it earlier today. I looked through it over the weekend. I tried to look through it again. I looked through it earlier today, looked through it over the weekend. I just tried to run through everything again, trying to see based off what it's been used for. But I, I can't find anything to do it. So I'm going to make that motion again, uh, to send to, I'm gonna make the motion to send to county council for disapproval per staff's recommendations.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion. Staff, would you please take a vote?
All right. Motion for disapproval. Those in favor? Brannum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? Metz? Grady? Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
All right, uh, the motion basis is six to three.
Okay, thank you again. But we're a recommending body, so, um, county council will have a, a binding vote in the future on this case. All right, uh, staff, when you're ready, please present the next case.
Okay, the next case is twenty-two dash zero, one, two M A. The applicant is Richard Hendy. The location is on hard Scrabble road, um, just to help you out, it's right near the entrance to Lake Carolina. The applicant is requesting rezon four point six three acres from P D D to an amended P D D. Their proposed use for this site is for a climate controlled self-storage, um, use. The general development plan for this, this area, uh, which is the Rice Creek Plantation P D D designates the site for office use. So because in order for them to change uses, they have to come in and amend the P D D, um, for the site. Um, again, this is another one of those principally recommendations from staff, um, that we recommend disapproval of the requests as it's not consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. Site's not located along a main road corridor or within a distance of primary arterial. Again, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval. However, the requested amendment to the, to the P D D for self, for a climate controlled self-storage would allow for service oriented commercial uses for the surrounding residential areas and would be compatible with allowable, um, uses within the P D D and existing surrounding development.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Grady?
Um, I, I know we've had this conversation. It may well have been about hard Scrabble road in the past of why this does not qualify as primary arterial. There is what definition of use in that term? Had some comment on that. Helpful because as noted, it's a, it's a five lane road, um, with, with certainly a substantial traffic count. So, um, clarification would be helpful.
Yeah, this would, so this is a state, uh, state right away, state on road, hard Scrabble. Um, this is one thing that we did inquire with them in the past because this was, as you mentioned, Dr. Grady, a question that has come up previously in other cases. Um, so with the road widening to five lanes, where they look into change that classification, um, what we were told previously was no, and it, and it's still showing as a minor arterial. So it has not been, um, upgraded, if you will, to a primary arterial. So that is in terms of the classification, it's not specifically a primary arterial, but we would typically consider this to be a, a primary road within the area. But because of just kind of the, the language with the comp plan, we, there's kind of a little bit of distinction there. It's nuanced in ways. But for this road in particularly, yes, it is five lanes, but it would still be considered a minor arterial.
He determined designations?
Yeah.
Question, helpful to have that, have a map to that effect or something on the planning department's website? Just because it's a, it's a term that comes up a fair bit in our discussions and the public might, uh, benefit from, from that.
No, and I, I think that that is a good point. And I think that's, that's something that the, maybe within the future land use map or other planning documents look to maybe designate some of those where it's not necessarily the functional class, but having some type of tiered setup with, you know, how we look at roadways in that, in that case.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Uh, when I got out of the military, I said I would never say this. Um, to piggyback on Dr. Grady about that, do you think the reason why they haven't changed that is because it's not fully finished yet? They're still working it? It's not fully finished five?
Not, not honestly. Couldn't, couldn't tell you because they, even on, when, on their websites, they do show proposed, um, changes as well. So whether that's going to be a new road or changes to those as well. So, uh, I feel like if they would be looking to change it, they would have shown something demonstrating at, at this point. Um, but from everything that I've seen, they've, they've not noticed in any type of way. So it, it could also be because it's not a larger state road as well or a federal road in many cases. So a lot of times that seems to be a differentiating factor. So I, I couldn't tell you for certain, but I mean, I think that's something that, um, could definitely reach out to D O T with, um, to find out again. And if there are any potential changes to that once, um, the road is completed construction wise.
Is there any way in the future for us to make our own designation of some roads in the county? Because I mean, even if they classified as a minor, but we know, let's say it's a four or five lane, uh, road here in the county. I mean, that could change a lot of things in the future.
Yeah, yes. I mean, not, not to get too far off topic here with the, uh, the case itself, but I mean, that's something that planning commission could designate as part of the comp plan. Um, so for instance, the future land use map, you could have a, a road typology related to that. I'd probably name it something different from functional class. Um, but I mean, you could look at it as this being, okay, this is a primary, secondary, tertiary type of road. Cause I think in, in a lot of instances, there are areas where it is a primary corridor. So take the Northwest for instance, um, you know, Dutch Fork and those, those aren't considered primary arterials. Those are either going to be minor arterials. And so even though there's going to be a primary roadway within that area, they're still not a functional class primary arterial. So there are certain situations where that could come in helpful, um, within the comp plan itself, but to more identif- to better identify how those, those roads kind of work and function, um, from a local standpoint too. I think that, that, that is something that planning commission can do. And there's a couple of ways that you all could, you all could look at that.
I mean, thank you, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
Just, just a quick question. Uh, in the past, I'll make sure I'm not looking, overlooking this, and I may probably am, but you used to include in the map amendments, um, whether or not a particular area was in consideration as part of the penny was, was this, this, I mean, I didn't see it anywhere, I don't think. Is it on there? I'm sorry if I missed.
And I, I hopefully this does address what you're asking, but on page thirty-five, I guess it would be the first full paragraph you see on page thirty-five.
Oh, yeah, I do. Eyes getting bad. Been on the planning commission too long. All right, thank you.
So, uh, this is part of the Rice Creek Plantation P D D, right?
Correct.
All right. And so under the current P D D, this four point six three, was it acres or labeled or intended to be office space? Would the office space use be consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan? Cause you see what I'm getting at? I just feel like if, if we've already made an accommodation via P D D for this parcel to be not necessarily with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, I mean, maybe it's worth considering further switching it from office to climate controlled self-storage.
Um, just kind of looking, I'm missing one on my page here. Yeah, looking at the land use and character, um, guidelines under the plans and policy for neighborhood medium density. You do see where's non-residential development may be considered for location along main road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of a primary arterial. So we would be actually, actually having the same exercise if someone was coming in and making this office office, had it not been designated under the current P D D.
Okay, thanks. And then we've got a climate controlled self-storage basically across the street.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you know, just point out one of the, um, you know, we, we have a lot of applicants that will come in and ask to do a P D D. One of the problems is especially as we used to do P D Ds, there were very large tracts of land. Uh, we want to do so. So if you look at the Lake Carolina area, which this, which was part of the Rice Creek Plantation, you look at a development like Wood Creek Farms. You look at even the summit, uh, those P D D is so large, it takes a while for them to fully develop. You know, some of them have been around twenty, thirty years right now at this point. And so it takes a while. And so during those times, you can't adequately identify what uses you, you propose to have there. So sometimes they will put a use and as we go forward, twenty, twenty-five years later, need to re- essentially reevaluate it. But that's just one of the, one of the hazards about people putting P D Ds, um, in place.
It's a, it's a planned development district, right? That's what P D D is. And so, yeah, it's kind of a a micro, uh, planning. a micro planning involving, I guess, staff and the developer at some point in time, right?
Well, actually, it's really to the developer, it's their chance to create their own zoning designation and create their own plan. And we're to look at that. And unfortunately, at times when they, they're very specific about a parcel or section within a development and where their use comes, they have to go back later on and reevaluate that. I believe there may have been a I'm sure there have been a few amendments to the Rice Creek Plantation PDD over the years, actually. Yes, according to, it has according to the general history. So there have been some amendments to this PDD previously.
I think I remember one in the last few months, several months.
Yeah, it may be the parcel, I'm not sure if it's the parcel south of it. Maybe, no, I'm not quite sure, I have to go back and do some research, but there have been some amendments to the Rice Creek Plantation PDD.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Do have two people signed up to speak.
Very good. Any other questions for staff before we hear from applicant? Okay.
All right, the first person we have is applicant Richard Hendy.
Thank you for your time, counsel. My name is Richard Hendy, it's 146 Golden Jubilee Road in Gilbert. Just, I guess, just going to explain to you, the project, we chose this parcel based on the fact it was on Hardscrabble Road and the use directly across the street was the exact use we were planning to develop and on. So that was our thing, our models showed that this area, especially within a three-mile radius, which is our target zone, that it's actually underserved for storage also. So I mean, that's all pretty much I got to say about it. We were very confused by the fact that Hardscrabble wasn't considered a main arterial and main road. So I was kind of surprised with the recommendation when we got it because we felt that we had a, chose a good location.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hendy? All right, thank you, Mr. Hendy.
Yeah, I believe my engineer wanted to speak as well.
Next person we have is Gerald Lee.
Good afternoon, I'm Gerald Lee. I'm an engineer with Chalan Associates, and we're working with Mr. Hendy to help him develop this piece of property. As far as the traffic is concerned, I'm not an official statement, but I can't believe that five lanes on Hardscrabble Road would not be considered a arterial road when it's all said and done, but that's just that. This property we're going to, this project we're going to do as a storage facility is not going to contribute any traffic issues if that is a concern. It is a tight site, there is a wetlands on the back pieces of property and with the county's fifty-foot buffer requirement, that's not leaving a whole lot of space. We feel the layout that Mr. Hendy wants to put in there is going to be a nice working space and work well within the buffers that we have. Thank you.
Sign up to speak.
That's all we had.
Mr. Price, can you just, and because it's PDD, that's just a sort of generic, doesn't tell us much on its own. Can you talk to us about the surrounding parcels? Any current uses or authorized uses under the plan?
Yeah, just looking on that same side of Hardscrabble Road, the parcels north and west of the of the subject parcel are either being developed, they're being developed residentially. Believe that is site that he made, that the mouse is on, I'm not sure if that is actually one of them. Tommy, can you zoom out a little bit? All right, so. Yes. All right, so these other parcels are being developed residential, unfortunately, my mapping has not caught up to it. But that's primarily the activity that's taking place in that area at this time.
It's to the south of it?
South of it, that's part of, go on, Tommy, where the detention pond is. Essentially, that's part of a detention pond for the development that's taking place.
Right of that, is that a?
To the right of it, here.
Oh, I mean.
Right below it, right below the subject parcel.
Right up. Over to the right? Down?
Down.
Right there.
That's the subject site.
Okay. All right. Residential development kind of above it to the north and then to the south and behind it, other than, I guess, some wetlands, is that right?
For the parcel just north of it, we actually had the same discussion among staff, parcel right there, Tommy. That is not being developed at this time residentially. It's the parcels above that.
Oh, okay. Other discussion or motions? Grady.
I would like to propose a motion that would send this request zero one back to the Hardscrabble Road. Highly compatible.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Moved improperly seconded, the motion is to send this case to county council with a recommendation of approval. Staff, would you please take a vote on the motion?
Sorry, I'm taking notes. All right, the motion is for approval of case twenty-two dash oh-one-two. Those in favor, Brandon?
Yes.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? First, excuse me, Metz? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously.
Whenever staff is ready, we'd like you to present the next case.
Okay, the next, the next case before you is case twenty-two dash zero-one-three MA. The applicant is Patrick Palmer, the location is on Killian Road. The applicant is requesting to rezonate a little less than one hundred and sixty-two acres from M1, which is light industrial, to GC, which is general commercial. So staff is of the opinion that proposed rezoning is consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan for the Economic Development Center corridor, future land use. Likewise, the request is only what fit with the intent description of the priority investment area. For these reasons, staff recommends approval.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll talk until the day, we haven't had these in a while. You know, one of the things is, if you look at all of the uses that have, that are adjacent, on adjacent properties, while some of them are zoned light industrial, all of them would have been permitted under the GC zoning designation.
All of the what?
All of the uses that you see on the adjacent parcels from the car dealerships to the tractor supply, to the Audi dealership, even going across the street to, there's a there's a multi-tenant commercial strip, and there's also a Walmart. So all of those would have been permitted under the GC zoning designation.
Yes, want to comment on this and just echo, I was going to ask you that question, whether or not what we currently have along that corridor would have been classified under GC, so thank you.
Right? No one here in favor of the application, is that correct, Mr. Dennis?
That is correct, we have three signed up against.
Okay, and so before we hear from the public, are there any other questions for staff? All right, Mr. Dennis.
All right, first person we have is Bob Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Robert Fuller, I'm an attorney in Columbia, seventeen-twenty Main Street. I'm here this afternoon with representatives of Jim Hudson Automotive Group, which occupies and owns adjacent properties. Present with me are Keith Hudson, who is a principal of the Automotive Group, and Karen Himes, who is the chief financial officer for Jim Hudson Automotive Group. The reason we are here today and have indicated opposition to this site is the impact that it is likely to have upon Jim Hudson Automotive's existing viable properties that front on Trenham Road. There are two points of entry or easement ways into this hundred and sixty-one acres that is being asked for permission to rezonate to general commercial, and both of them go through properties of the Jim Hudson Automotive Group. So there is a tremendous potential for impact on the existing investment properties, which are two automobile dealerships and additional peripheral properties owned by the Hudson Group at that location. So the not knowing, and for one thing, what would be actually there, the opening up of a hundred and sixty-one acres of general commercial property adjacent to the Automotive Group's properties, without having any real indication of what the actual uses would be, is a very scary prospect for the investment at Jim Hudson. The properties that feed off of Killian Road would come through the property, which is always an active, open facility. It has components of retail sales of automobiles, it has parts delivery, it has the motor carriers that bring in new vehicles. There's a tremendous amount of activity immediately airing adjacent to a portion of this hundred and sixty-one acres, all of which is desired to be rezoned at one time.
Okay, thank you, that's your time, thank you, Mr. Fuller. Next.
Next we have Keith Hudson.
Hey, thank you, my name's Keith Hudson. I'm owner with my father, Jim Hudson, on these properties that you're looking at here on Killian Road. We just have a concern about, again, the property, what it's being utilized for behind us. That current campus, which you see, we call Killian Campus, there's three dealerships there. There's currently about two hundred and fifty employees that are at that location, very high traffic already. And the concern going through where you see the hand up on the screen, that's currently where that cul-de-sac ends, and the easement would be coming straight through that property, going to the back area. So access, there's a lot of people, the parking lot you see to the, immediately to the right of where your cursor is, that's my employee parking, which normally will occupy at least a hundred and fifty to sixty employees daily in that location. Plus, which you heard, a lot of activity coming through with eighteen-wheelers. When we have inventory, they deliver inventories coming through their parts trucks, so there's a lot of activity. So our concern, if it's going to be housing, what's going to be behind us? Because we have currently, with the three buildings there, I have about forty-five million dollars invested in that corner with facilities that we've built and what's there. And certainly, we have a lot of, a lot invested in that corner. So we, we're just concerned about what's going to be behind us, what would that use be? And how that'll make an impact on the traffic mainly to us being tenants in the front. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any questions for Mr. Hudson, Mr. Fuller, and then we have one more?
Yes, we have Karen Hames.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, some question for staff real quick. How many, how many car dealerships do we have along that corridor?
Is Mr. Delage is zooming, Tommy, can you take off the parcel information and zoom out a little bit more, or at least slide this over? All right, so if you look at the ones that are adjacent, or at least near the subject parcel, if you've identified a few, zoom in a little bit, Tommy. If you go down Killian Road and take Killing Commons Parkway, two, one, two, three, I think there are four along that area. And then if you go along Killian Road, near, where Killian Road and West Killian Road intersect, where near the Move Fitness Center is, I believe there are two, one, two parking, two car dealerships there. And there is one that's also being proposed at the intersection of Ferroy and Clemson Road. That zoning has changed, it's not longer HI, but that parcel is being proposed for a car dealership also.
Okay. Thank you, staff. All they have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ms.
Chairman.
Dennis.
Yes, Hannah Drive and Kaiser Hill Road, are those state, county?
County roads.
County roads?
Let me go on again, Tommy. Yes, county roads.
Chairman.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist.
Make a motion that we send case number twenty-two zero-one-three A, zero, twenty-two zero-one-three MA forward to council recommendation of approval.
Chair. Yes, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Metz.
I wanted to ask, maybe the applicant can help me out on this, but are all just these corner pieces Hudson property? Or is it the other one down that runs along I-77, is that also owned by the applicant? That's what I'm trying to figure out for the easement.
Applicant's not here.
I'm sorry, not the applicant, my bad, my bad, I'm Mr. Hudson, I guess, if I can ask him. Throughout those easements that were mentioned, I guess we talked about, does that go all the way down? Or if you're asking about Hannah and Kaiser Hill, right?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so those are just county roads, I'm just wondering where all these easements are? And if it's, if those are just the two roads that affect his properties here, or if there are other properties around, you know, the applicant's piece here for the hundred and sixty-one some odd acres.
Mr. Fuller and Mr. Hudson want to come back to the podium?
I think I understand you, excuse me, I think I understand your question and can supply the answer for it, if not, Mr. Hudson certainly can. The easements come off of Killian Road into the, the roadways come into the Hudson property. The easements extend from the cul-de-sac end of the road and at the end projection of the secondary road and go through the Hudson property to join up to one hundred and sixty-one acres, which is behind the Hudson Automotive Group properties. Meaning that the access to the hundred and sixty-one acres comes through a public road for a part of the way, then comes through an easement through the Hudson property to this hundred and sixty-one acre parcel.
Fine, thank you. And was there another question there?
No, that's all, I just wanted some clarification on that, thanks.
Mr. Chair, I mean,
Mr. Price.
Maybe for your clarification, and maybe Mr. Fuller can address this. Is there actually an existing legally recorded easement already for this parcel? an existing legally recorded easement already for this parcel, or will the the applicant need to obtain one once this site is developed going through the Jim Hudson Property?
Mr. Fuller, thanks for coming back to the podium.
I may just sit here.
There you go.
There there is a recorded easement at each of those locations that go through the Hudson Property to join to that parcel. The parcel size itself, of course, is of concern to this application, because it's for the rezoning of the entire hundred and sixty-one acres. But the access routes to get from Killian Road to the parcel through the Hudson Property do exist as recorded easements.
Thank you. Dr. Yoki.
About the map, is there an easement that we know of over by Tractor Supply that gets into this property?
So much, so much, Tommy.
Mr. Fuller, got an opportunity to speak again?
That that is one of the two easements. The one comes by tractor supply. The other is is closer to the interstate.
Thank you. I was also curious if we had any comments from residents in the area. I remember some cases, if you zoom the map out. Kind of maintain that area.
No, sir. We don't. We haven't received any comments from any of the residents. We haven't, and I think maybe the difference is that when we did receive comments for parcels across the street, that's because they were budding parcels that were residentially developed versus this one across the street. It's either by some type of industry or undeveloped parcels.
They're currently currently zoned M one. Application is for GC. Got GC parcels to the north and M one parcel to the east along I seventy-seven. Property is located within a economic development corridor.
Because, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Price.
You do have a motion.
Yeah.
On the on the table.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Gilchrist had a motion for approval, and so we'll look for a second. Is there a second? We have a second, and the motion is to send this case two-two zero one three MA.
If I may, just.
Yes.
Just want to ask one quick question to staff. This particular zoning request would allow for more commercial development in in that area. Is that right?
That's correct.
There's been a great concern in this area of the county that there needs to be more economic development in this part of the county, and so I was just curious to know if in fact my interpretation of what this particular zoning request is would would indeed fulfill that. So, thank you, Mr. Price, for sharing that with me. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Are you looking to hear from Mr. Price? Are you good?
Oh, he's he's, I know, he's answering my question, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you want to say something else to me.
I just want to point out, because this is also brought up by the applicant. So, the M one zoning designation, which is light industrial, was a was a carryover from our our code. I guess our, at least when I started, I want to say the original code, seems like I started when we first adopted zoning, but it was a carryover to our two thousand and five code. Unfortunately, you can't rezone to it. It's not eligible for anybody to apply for, but it was just allowed to remain. And then light industrial allowed for a number of commercial zoning designations, as I used to kind of deem those kind of like general commercial on steroids, because it allowed for a lot of commercial uses, but it also allowed for those light industrial uses. But I think maybe what Mr. Gilchrist may have been kind of asking, one of the distinctions between the M one and the GC has to do more with residential. So, multifamily uses are a permitted use in the GC designation, but not in the light industrial.
Got it.
All right, thanks. So, nothing further. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All right, and staff, you take the vote, please.
Those in favor? Branum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? Metz? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
All right, and motion passes. Six-two.
All right, motion passes six to two, and again, we're recommending body, so this case will now go up to county council for a vote. And staff, I believe this will be our final individual map amendment case, two-two zero one four MA.
Yes, sir. All right, the next case is twenty-two that's zero one four MA. The applicant is Marion Branch, if I'm saying that correctly. The location is eleven forty Kate Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone four point one, four point five five acres from rural to light industrial. Staff's recommendation for this request is for denial. Not it's not consistent with the objectives of the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan for, the policy outlined in the in the comprehensive plan, limited development using low-impact designs to support environmental preservation, tourism, recreation, research, education, and active working lands uses are recommended. Subdivision of land for commercial and residential development is discouraged within these areas. Again, for these reasons, staff recommends disapproval of this request.
Thank you. Any upfront questions for staff on this case? Mr. Dennis, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
We do have the applicant, Marion Branch.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Marion Branch, eleven forty Kate Road. I've been in business for twenty-two years at this location, working with Richland County Highway Patrol. At one time, I worked with like a hundred and twenty-five different car companies, picking up cars for them and disposing of them. And my first question, since it doesn't seem to be valid, that I upgrade my business from rural, rural commercial rural to L one, can I withdraw my application, or is it done deal, sense I'm here?
The staff can correct me, but I think you can withdraw it.
Yes, I'm normally, this case, most most applicants withdraw prior to the meeting. I believe that since this has occurred, the meetings have always been open, then it would be up to the planning commission on whether to accept the withdrawal request or to proceed on with making a recommendation to council.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal of case two-two zero one four MA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded. Staff, please take a vote.
All right, those in favor of the motion of motion for withdrawal? Branum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? Metz? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous?
All right, thank you, sir. Your your application is withdrawn. Hey, um, nothing further on the individual map amendment applications, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, let's see, item number eight on our agenda, item, other items for discussion. So, we've got sub-items, let's see, A and B. Yeah, just sub-items A and B there. So, um, if you if you give me a second, I just want to say that I proposed these motions after discussion with Assistant County Administrator Jensen, as we talked about the best way to go about advancing the conversation as to the tax amendments for the code and as to the zoning map itself. If we take just binding votes, kind of that would stand on their own, as soon as we made a recommendation for one thing or another, we would, the natural protocol would be for it to go on up to county council, and then they would they would vote on it. But, you know, we're looking at this as a process that's going to take multiple conversations, and probably a process that's going to build on itself, and a process that we might also need to reserve the right to go back and modify some things that potentially we thought were, you know, set, you know, just based on how things develop. You got ripple effects going, you know, forwards and backwards potentially, as you look at text amendments and things like that. So, so this motion under A here on item eight, that's what that's meant to do. It's meant to create something of a semi living, running ledger of the things that the planning commission has voted on by way of the zoning map and proposed text amendments. This would get it into a way that we have it in writing, and that we know that we have, you know, a majority support for the item, but it would keep it in a in a, you know, not yet final state with the intention to conglomerate these things over time with these meetings, and then ultimately, once we reach a point in time where we're ready to take a final vote, to send a package of recommendations to county council, that's when we. I'd like to be able to take interim votes along the way and put those things in writing so that we're all clear on what we have agreed to, or the things that we need to factor in as we continue developing our proposed amendments and the zoning map itself. So, that's the basis for that motion, and then you'll see here in in sub-part B there, I do have a first set of specific motions that I for recommendations that I'd like have added ledger of recommended amendments and zoning maps. But I'd like to have us take votes on each one of these things as they come up, so that, you know, we have a good sense of where the majority really does stand on these things. I I feel like, based on the conversations that we've had in the past, that we were ready for the motion, the motion that I laid out in sub-part B. And and again, I, as I indicated earlier, I fully expect that we will have additional motions for additional amendments along the way. We want to be able to talk about those things openly, especially during our work sessions, but for these, at least on these initial motions, I wanted to go ahead and have them during this regular meeting. So, if if we that running ledger created, and then be able to utilize it through the work sessions and the other meetings where we discuss these things.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Price.
As this is placed on the agenda as a motion item, and requires action, that this would you would need to actually make a motion for it and get a second, and then take a vote on for each one.
Right. So, that was my little explanation for why I've made the motions, and the motions are written out there in the agenda. The first one being a motion to create a running list of recommended changes to the twenty twenty-one land development code and zoning map, which will be voted on individually, and changes will be added if they receive a majority vote. The ledger will be consolidated into a single agenda item for the commission's final consideration at the end of the land development code revision process. So, that's the motion, and yeah, we need a second before we could vote on that.
Chairman, before we go to second, so are we taking item A and B separately?
Separately.
Okay. So, move, Mr. Chairman, on item A?
Okay, seconding my motion. Is that?
Oh, you've already made him. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes.
And Mr. Gilchrist seconds the motion. Any other debate or discussion before we vote? Okay, staff, if you would take a vote on item eight A.
All right, those in favor of item eight A, a motion to create a ledger for the land development coding zoning map. Those in favor? Branum?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle? Metz? Grady?
Aye.
Taylor? Gilchrist?
Aye.
Is unanimous?
All right, thank you. So, that that motion passes. The second motion is is more specific, and it is a recommended, it's a motion to to add the following four items to the running ledger of recommendations.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
And I didn't make it to the last meeting, so if I'm asking a question that's out of turn, please let me know. We got a lot of congratulations in here today for some of these recommendations that obviously are still recommendations, I think. Nothing has gone to council. We hadn't voted on it as a planning commission. Is that right?
Right.
And so, I just wanted to, just for the record, make sure that that the public understands that, A, number one, we do have a running ledger of of these things. Number two, as we we look to try to figure out how, you know, if in fact, these recommendations are something that we will consider in its totality. I was just, I was quite interested in wanting to know, and I guess from the commission, since you guys worked on this the last time, or whoever worked on it, if it was you and Assistant County Administrator, what was there a certain area of the county that we looked at to get these recommendations from, or was it from a totality of of information that we'd gathered from comments that we'd heard from the public?
So, if if I'm the movement, you know, I just asked that they be placed on the agenda for speaking just for myself. This was from the incorporating the general public input that we received, but also my personal review of the two thousand and five land development code with the current draft of the twenty twenty-one code, looking again at sort of the the equivalency table, as it were, and how the permitted uses from the old districts compared to the proposed equivalent new districts. So, based on the prior LDC, the two thousand and five code LDC, we had two to four family dwelling units, I know, in the RM residential multifamily districts, and under that translation table, and the new code, those would be districts R five and R six. And so, that's some of the reasoning for my motion to just go ahead and align those things with what I've heard, and then, you know, what I feel like, you know, is is harmonious with the two thousand and five land development code, and the current will, my my own personal, you know, consideration of things, but also what I heard from public input.
Okay, and the commission, thank you for that. And the commission has not had a chance to debate this or?
We've debated the topic, but we've definitely not debated my motion.
Got it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. It was the the last meeting was, it was a good, it was a good session. Mr. Crooks was extremely helpful in, you know, talking through some of the specifics and some of the potential ramifications of some of the areas that we've been asked to consider. And so, thanks to Crooks for that. So, yeah, any any other discussion? I know it was in the amended agenda, so Mr. Gilchrist didn't have a chance to look at it before the meeting.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, didn't get.
Sounds like everybody else did. Mr. Crooks, you're looking at me. Do you have a comment?
I was just gonna ask, so in terms of these motions, are you looking to take them up? All is one motion. Are you looking to split the question and take each one of those individually?
Yeah, my intent was to split the question. So, if we could, I'll just go ahead and just ask if, you know, based on my motion, is there a second as to the agenda item eight B one-one that is the motion to remove townhome dwellings from the R four zoning district? townhome dwellings from the R four zoning district. There a second on that motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded.
And Mr. Chair, just to clarify, this is just to add these to the ledger to, so I guess further clarification on that is, is then going back, evaluating those as part of either work session discussions or I guess, I'm just trying to get an idea procedurally how you're aligning that.
Yeah, that's, that's how it's written on the agenda is for it to be added to the ledger. So that's what I would stick with that.
We're just looking to add these items to the ledger or you actually going to, gonna have discussion and vote on placing this? So we want to take this back up again, once it's on the ledger?
We sure, we could, but I just, you know, again, I want to try to have the opportunity for the commission to express, to help us figure out where the majority is on certain issues and see if we can find consensus there. If we're ready to add it to the ledger. And if not, they can just sit and, and we can take it up later. We can always revisit things if we need to.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Gilchrist.
And I think Mr. The chairman mentioned that this, this would be a running ledger, is that right? So which will give us the ability to go back and make modifications, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Price, I think Chairman just, just clarified that for you. Mr. Chairman did, Chairman Brandon did mention that this is a running ledger that would allow us to be able to go back and make any additional adjustments if needed.
Right. I, I'm sure throughout the process, I said, once we add these to the ledger, before we take final action, what's going to be forwarded to county council will probably go back and look at these individually again, what's on the ledger to ensure that's the, that's the will of the planning commission for the.
Yeah, again, I just, I think sometimes to facilitate discussion, it's easier just to have something in writing that we can discuss specifically and, and react to versus, you know, just talking about a general topic. We're just trying to advance the conversation where I feel like the commission might be ready to advance it, so.
Chair?
Yes.
Paraphrase, in my understanding, this is a running list that we would put together each time that we meet and are able to vote. And then at the end, take that consolidated list, always have the opportunity to look at it again, but make one big final vote before we send it to council.
Right, yes.
We can send this out to the public as we go, maybe on the website, that we're making these motions and moving in this direction.
Yeah, I hope it'll help like both the commission and the public track where we are with the process.
We, we do have a motion on the floor also.
Got him, we still have a motion and we still haven't had a second, right?
We had a second from Mr. Dennis.
Oh, I got the second, okay. And then Mr. Jensen wants to be heard.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Eric Jensen, ACA, for the record. Very briefly, the way we, it's been done that I, in, in others jurisdictions is very similar to what you just elucidated, that essentially it is exactly that, it is a running ledger of things that the commission has built a consensus on that should happen. What will happen is at the end, the text actually has to be written up and brought back to the body for final approval. In other words, at this point here, you do not have the actual language of the change in front of you. You are just simply saying, staff, this is the direction that the commission wants to head at this point. Go forth and draft the text and bring it back to us at the end. So that's, that is exactly what you're doing.
Any questions from Mr. Jensen while he's at the podium? Okay. All right, well, thank you. So that, that, that's the motion, that's the second. I hope there's clarification there. I mean, it's certainly something none of us have engaged in before this process. So just, just doing our best, want to, want to give something a try and hope it just advances things because in as much as we do want to take the time requisite to do the job right, we do want to make progress. We don't want to be treading water indefinitely. All right, so the motion is up for vote, which is that B one one, the motion as townhouse dwell, have townhouse dwellings removed from the R four zoning district as a permitted use. Staff, if you would take the vote. Aye.
Aye. Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
I'll be abstaining since I was not present at the last meeting, so I will be abstaining.
All right, thank you. The motion passes and the next one on the agenda is as to two family dwellings. Move to recommend removal of two family dwellings from R two, R three, R four and CC one zoning districts. That's the motion, is there a second?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Looking at this, one of the things I want to point out that in doing the land development code, there were a couple of zoning designations that we had where there weren't any changes. We kept all PDDs as they were. Again, those have already been approved at council, so none of the PDDs were changed. And the same thing, hopefully I'm correct in saying this, for, I'm sorry, none of the changes were made to PDDs. And the same thing goes with the master plans. In this particular case, the Crane Creek is part of what was a master plan area. And so those changes were not, no changes were made to that designation either. So it's kind of a, I guess, a recommendation of staff that as you go forward with items two, three, and four, that any action you take removes CC one from your discussion and really just deals with the new proposed zoning designations of the known land development
Any, any person on that? What, what was the difference? You had CC one and then you have CC two?
CC one, two, three, and four. And I think I'll leave any of those questions with Mr. Crooks, they, and also the planning services area.
Okay.
They're familiar with the master plan.
So the two to four family dwelling units were permitted under the CC one district for Crane Creek master plan?
Yeah, so those are currently, because the, the way that that district is set up, it's a little bit different than the normal zoning districts. So that would be considered a building type within that, and that's already allowed within that district.
Well, like we said, it's a running ledger, that's the proposal. So I'm happy to amend my motions to remove the CC one zoning district references for those B one, two, three, and four. Mr. Yonki?
On our screen, we have the land development code rewrite, the cover page. I believe there's a table that shows the townhouse, two families. Flip to that page, we can have that up. It's permitted, the permit table. Thank you. Family, I don't see a P there. Permitted, Mr.?
That looks like, yeah, it looks like it's missing a P there. Yonki? All right, CC. So I guess what I was referencing is the 2005 code is that building type, it allows for several different uses within it. So the CC district in the 2005 code is, is a true mixed use district, so it allows for multiple use types. So that, that use activity, it allows for certain building types within that then, which would allow for townhomes, things of that nature within that CC one, CC two, CC three, CC four. So it's a more, it's more of a form-based zoning district than a Euclidean standard like most of our other districts are.
Just, I said CC one wasn't changing from 2005.
It's not supposed to, that was one of the ones that, so this is just one of those where oversight at that point.
Chairman? Mr. Dennis?
Yep. Yeah, according to CC one on our old one, it's not, it does not have, it says dwellings, conventional or modular multifamily not otherwise listed, it is not permitted in CC one on that table. So how did we get it permitted in CC one on the other table then?
Or Grady?
Yeah, I, I believe that this stems from, there's, there's been some terminological confusion. And I think this, you know, relying on my past experience in, in the housing regulatory space. When something says multifamily, that typically refers to a building of five or more units because that is the way that the federal. So I would imagine how would I seem that? Sorry. I, I believe that when, when, when that document refers to multifamily, that would refer to a building with five or more housing units as opposed to any number more than one. Because come up.
Yeah, thanks. The comment was that the, the, the 2005 land development code did not permit multifamily dwellings in the CC one district, but multifamily was defined as five family dwellings and, and greater. Chairman? Is that right? Mr. Grady?
That is, that is my understanding, yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes, when you flip the page over, it does have a two-family category and it's not permitted in that one either. So townhomes can be two, two-family.
So the permitted use chart as drafted in the 2021 code then does seem to match the permitted use chart in the 2005 code?
No, I don't think it does.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's one of these, so, so one of the things that here is, I think in part consolidation of uses. So where previously we have zero lot line common as a specific use versus as a standard. So with the 2021 code, that is a more specific standard. And so that use was in part consolidated, so zero lot line common, zero lot line common was consolidated with duplexes. So that use, and particularly zero lot line common, is allowed in CC one, but the duplex use specifically was not in the 2005 code. So there's some, some distinctions that need to be clarified there related to those uses. And what I was also referencing was those building types as well. And so CC one, again, how we're looking at some of that, and it's a terminology is going to have some effect on that as well. But from that use table perspective, Mr. Dennis is correct, where duplex specifically in the 2005 code is not noted, but a zero lot line common is, but in the 2021 code, that zero lot line common was consolidated into duplex. So kind of just pointing some of those things out there, but I, I think from, as this being a running ledger, I think this is one of the things that we can discuss going forward from staff's perspective to point out some of those things as y'all retake this item up or discuss them in work sessions, what have you.
Yeah, so that was single family, zero lot line common. Is that?
That's, that's the use that I'm referencing, yes.
Does anybody have any questions about the, the term single family common, zero lot, lot line?
Is that effectively a townhouse?
Okay, zero lot line common. They're along the lines of what you was, sees a duplex. So if you're riding down the street, for example, and you see two dwelling units, you know, they're attached, a lot of times people say that's a duplex. The difference is when you have zero lot line common, it may look like a duplex, but technically they're on two separate parcels. And that's one of the defining differences between a duplex and a zero lot line common structure. Would it allow townhomes? No, because part of the requirements for a zero lot line common is that there'd be a setback from the adjacent property line, from the other property line. So you won't have units more than two units connected.
Well, I mean, we can, we can vote on that now, or I can amend my motion to remove the CC one zoning district for the time being, and we can take that up later. So that, that's what, that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to amend my motion. Those subparts two, three, and four to remove reference to CC one zoning districts.
Mr. Chair, I also want to point out that the CC one zoning designation is exclusive for the Crane Creek master plan area. So someone can't come in and just, I want to do CC one and allow the uses within there.
All right, so that's, that's my newly amended motion. It's for BI two. So I'll just renew that motion with the amendment and ask for a second on it. All right.
What are we?
This is eight BI two. So the motion is to recommend removal of two family dwellings from R two, R three, and R four zoning districts. All right, thank you. It's moved and seconded. And staff, would you please take a vote on this motion?
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Metz?
Grady?
Al.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
I'm abstaining due to the fact that I was not at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. So now BI three, this is my motion to recommend removal of three fam- family dwellings from R two, R three, and R four zoning districts. As the motion, is there a second? Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, staff, would you please take a vote?
Those in favor? I would have known, noticed by heart by now. Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Grady?
Al.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Thank you.
Motion passes?
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. And then finally, this is my motion to recommend removal of four family dwellings from R two, R three, and R four zoning districts. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, move is seconded. Any discussion? Okay, staff, if you please take a vote.
Second it.
Yonki?
All right, those in favor? Branham?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Metz?
Grady?
Al.
Taylor?
Aye.
Gilchrist?
Thank you.
Motion passes six to one. And now on to. And now on to item number nine. Other items for discussion. This is a motion by Councilwoman Newton. Would anyone on staff like to introduce the motion?
Sure. Um, so this was a motion that was put forth by Ms. Newton back in, I believe it was July, and then moved forward to the Development and Services Committee. I believe sometime, I'm going to say, Mr. Jensen may be able to correct me here, but I believe sometime February, March, it was determined that because its relation to needing to, depending on what, what the action came about, it was, would need to go before Planning Commission, and because it dealt with the continual planning program that Planning Commission has, that it would, should come before this body for a recommendation also. So just to kind of go over the motion, it's to move to direct staff to evaluate current zoning laws that permit zoning designations for large residential developments to remain in perpetuity and present options to reevaluate and/or rezone those properties if they are not developed within seven years. Recommendations should include processes to ensure that zoning and the comprehensive plan remain consistent with the lived character of the community. So that was the motion. And this, so commission received the briefing document, it will say this is the abridged briefing document. So it did not include a couple of attachments, which were the State Planning Act, the comp plan, and the SCAC plan, a land use planning guide. So just figured that most of the commissioners probably had some of that information already, or but also to cut down on the 400 something-page document that it was otherwise. So staff's recommendation for this was to take no action in regards to the proposed motion and continue with the current initiatives and processes in conducting continual planning program for the county. So really what that relates to was at the time, continue on with the mapping process as it was moving forward, which could address in part some of those inconsistencies. But also to, as part of, say, five-year evaluation and/or the new update of the comp plan, reevaluate areas and see where have we approved, or council rather, or has council approved, say, going back within that 10-year period, where has council approved rezoning requests, map amendments? Where has development taken place or not taken a place, but also part of our recommendation, was that approval consistent or not consistent with the comp plan? Because that's really kind of where a lot of the basis for staff is coming from as part of this recommendation is, if something was consistent with the plan and it was approved, it's still consistent with the plan. If it was something that was not consistent and there was no necessary, you know, specific rationale for why that approval went forward, that's one of those where then, okay, it makes sense to go back, reevaluate. Should that be proactively rezoned to another district, whether that was what it was previously, or do something else as well? Versus just, okay, that was rezoned 10 years ago. No one started developing that site or not, but that approval is still consistent. So that's kind of where we were coming from as early start recommendation. And there's a couple of things within that briefing document, obviously, that goes in a little bit more detail. In terms of this, one is you can't have like, you know, an automatic motion that's something automatically reversed. That's, that's one thing here. You have to, that council has to approve that final motion, no matter what. Go through the ways that that motion can be enacted in terms of brought forward to council. And then also kind of within the briefing document details the variety of, say, concerns, issues, but also the comments for consideration that we as staff brought forward related to this. So things related to consistency, things related to looking at the future land use map, things that you can include related to that, as well as the planning process that Planning Commission was conducting at the time, is conducting now, related to this. And like, just for clarification, so this, so the briefing document itself was from the September 28th, 2021 Development and Services Committee. So that agenda item is there, the briefing document. The corresponding materials are all going to be found in part of that agenda.
This motion has been around since before September 2021?
No, it looks like the, it was made at the July 13th meeting. The September 28th would have been the next committee meeting. So council doesn't have committees in August. And so that July 13th meeting, that September 28th would have been the next, next available day for the item.
Or anything in the currently adopted 2021 Land Development Code that like approximates this at all?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, can you read that?
Is there anything in the 2021 currently adopted Land Development Code that approximates what she's referenced in this motion at all?
I'd say not specifically. So in terms of the Land Development Code, it still, you still wouldn't be able to create an automatic reversal of a previous approval. It's still, there's, there's nothing that can actively say, oh, hey, it's been seven years, this thing hasn't been developed, it's automatically going to change back to whatever it was. It would have, there would have to be either a motion brought back by, say, County Council, this commission, or initiated by the county administrator or planning staff to then bring that motion back before the process. So that includes recommendation from staff, recommendation from this body, and then the approval of County Council specifically to then revert that. So there's nothing that automatically says, hey, this thing, sure, you know, there could be a process that gets established that does that to create that, but I think from staff's perspective, that doesn't make sense. That's not necessarily, it's a good planning in a way. And so it's, there's nothing explicit that does this in the 2021 Land Development Code. Staff's not necessarily aware of any automatic mechanism that could go ahead and trigger this. I think what we, after various meetings and discussions, had noted to the committee was that, you know, we could, we can note as part of the plan itself, so the comp plan that is part of the review, we go back a period of years, look at things, and then bring that back to the commission and council's attention. But I don't think in terms of, and staff's point of view, that there's anything that specifically, you know, hey, it's been X period of time, nothing's been done, we're going to bring back a case that automatically rezones as to whatever it was, and then has it go through that process.
We're not, we're not asked to take any action today, right? Yeah, so we're just, we're just talking. And we could talk about it more later.
May I, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. Very simply, the, you know, the South Carolina code requires us to review the comprehensive plan every five years. And this should just be a standard part of reviewing it to look at properties that are zoned, and is the zoning appropriate? Does it match up with the county's vision at that time that the comprehensive plan is revisited? And it's a very simple process to do. You just simply put it in your checklist of things to do when you update your, and revise your comprehensive plan. So that's really all that needs to be done.
Thank you. I mean, as I indicated earlier, we can talk about this more later. It's not an action item on today's agenda, but thank you for the kind of initial introduction to the issue and the motion. Is there anything else that the commission has on this item? For general, just. Here. Dennis?
Yeah, I got one. I read it in depth, so I gotta get my thoughts out there, sorry. But it shouldn't take that long. So when I read this, I began immediately thinking about when you buy a piece of property up near a lake that hasn't been developed, and you're getting ready to put a dock on it, and you get the permit from Dominion now. You get the permit from Dominion, and you get your plans approved. And you got five years to do it. And that, that five years, if you have not put your house on there and you have not done your dock, you got to resubmit everything and get it approved again. So that's kind of how I was looking at this. I think it's a good idea, but I do think what Mr. Jensen said, adding that to our comprehensive plan to relook every five years and seeing if we are trying to go out in that area, I think this does help us prevent haphazard development. If we approve something and a couple of years go down the road, and in between where it's approved, it's starting to change, and our comp plan changes, it allows us to go in a different route. Because if somebody's really looking to rezone 150 acres to do a residential subdivision, but they don't do anything, they can't get it done, then we need to look at how we can utilize that in the future for different development. The only problem is a lot of these things that I see in development is, and I just got an email not too long ago, last week, is that DEHEC is now taking 17 to 23 weeks to approve septic tanks. So I mean, you know, when you start looking at it, there's other agencies out there that hinder development. And there are certain agencies out there that help development. And if we're going to put a timeline on something, I think we need to look at the process of developing something from when you buy it, rezone it all the way through to ensure that we give people the amount of time that they need to develop a piece of land. And that's just kind of what I got from it when I read it over the weekend. So I just kind of wanted my thoughts to be out there and just give everybody kind of a, how I was thinking. So in the future, when we do take this up, you guys might take something away from it and help me figure it out.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Grady.
Yes. I guess this is a question for staff. So is, is this, is this language as written, is this exactly how Councilwoman Newton phrased her motion last year?
The motion of origin? Yes, yes, sir, Dr. Gary. That is, that is the, the motion language specifically, yes.
Okay, because I, I would just put out there for consideration that there, there are two terms in here that are very nebulous. The first one being large residential developments. We would need to define what, what that entails, whether that's an acreage, whether that's a number of proposed units, things of that sort. And the second one is obviously lived character of the community. I think depending on where you go, you could ask 10 people in a neighborhood, what, what they think of their community, you could get 10 different answers. So we would need to identify some, some, I think, clearer language if we were going to consider a motion of this sort to, to define exactly how we would evaluate lived character of the community. That's all.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, good callouts. Just make sure that was heard, that we should probably look to better define large residential developments in a reference to live character of the community in the motion. Okay. Yeah, we'll talk about, as we prepare the next meeting agenda, we'll look at what we need to do with that agenda item. Anything else on item nine there? Okay. And item 10 is a chairman's report. So thank you to staff for advancing the, the preparation of the minutes from prior meetings, so we have those to be able to vote and, and adopt those. What, what additional update can we get as far as both getting those transcribed and then also uploaded to the county's website?
Right now, we're working with transcripts in this on some old minutes that we've had, you know, these more recent ones. There was an issue, again, I think I may have stated before, on converting those from one format to another, as their ability to be able to transcribe those. But that has been worked out now. And so what we're doing is we're going through and ensuring that all of the minutes that we have are being transcribed, have been approved by the Planning Commission, and are being put on the server. I mean, I think if you look right now, there've been a number of updates to the webpage that have the minutes from past meetings. There aren't a lot from 2022, but believe the ones that you've approved today will shortly be placed on there. And then we'll work on getting the other ones on there also.
Other than the ones we approved today, are there any other sets that we've already approved, but that are not yet uploaded?
Not for 2022.
But maybe for 2021?
I think there are two months, and I don't have them directly in front of me, which are being worked on for 2021. Because I believe all of those have been, have been approved except for two.
All of 2021 has been approved except for two?
Except for two. And again, once we get those, we can bring those forward to the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I'm trying to think through how that's going to go if there's some turnover.
Well, I'll be happy to talk about that under the next.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Dennis.
On the minutes, I do have a question about those. I know we've started videotaping a lot of these. And I know you can go to YouTube and you can search them, but sometimes they're hard. Is there also a way for us to put a link in the minute section to which ones that we record? So that they can also pull up the recording from YouTube, like a quick link? I, I mean, it's, I know it's not required by law, but I was just curious if it could be done.
Anything that we can do to make it more convenient for people can be, but, right?
As I say, we can talk about that in the next item two, or also in relation to some of the restart stuff. I was going to point some of those things out, but yeah.
Oh, well, good. Otherwise, just, you know, thank you all for all of your hard yards in this work, both staff and the commission. Obviously ongoing, gonna, gonna have a work session right after this. Hopefully somebody brought some Gatorade or something, I don't know. But anyway, without further ado, let's go ahead and move on to planning director's report.
Kind of a jump on with what we were just talking about. So in some years ago, we had an issue, it's more with the Board of Zoning Appeals, where we had a turnover. But yet you had minutes that couldn't be, you know, you can argue that it couldn't be approved because everybody wasn't there. So we talked to our legal department regarding that. You don't have to, you don't have, you, you are not required to be present in order to vote on the minutes. Because what you're actually doing is you're really reading it through them, and based on the content, do you see anything that just kind of stands out? You may not have been at the meeting. And so what, and we had to, that, that approach essentially had to been, had to be taken by, I think from our legal department to us is because I think one of these you just pointed out, you could have a quick turnover. And so the question becomes, well, if everybody's gone who was present at the meeting, what happens to those minutes? Does that mean they just never get approved? Or, you know, so we had, what was said to us is that even, even if you weren't there, you can read those and you can vote based on the content of the minutes.
All right, we might like to have a county attorney present if it comes to a situation like that.
Yeah.
Go back over the rules of procedure as well.
Yeah, I'll be happy to, you know, have them come. Unfortunately, we've had turnover there, so, but no, I believe that we've had a few, one of the county attorneys who was present during the time is still here, but we can get any of the attorneys to come in and speak on it.
Okay. So do you have, Bryce?
Tommy, could you go to the, to the planning homepage for me, please, sir? I just wanted to point out, so I think some of the things that we talked about at the work session, as well as some of the other meetings, is kind of how do we showcase some of the information related to the restart process? If I can scroll down.
Thank you, Mr. Frogs.
Yeah, so, so what we've done here is we've tried to, try to lay this out as best we can with as much information as we can. So one of the things here is anything that's going to be related to the restart, you're going to be able to find it on this webpage. May not be as up to date at the moment, but kind of as we have meetings, as we have things come about, there's going to be that information here. So if you look at it, you've got, you know, four, four real columns here where one of it is, one of the columns is going to be everything related to news. So whenever there's a press release or any type of informational sendout that we have, you'll be able to find that linked information back here. Same way with meetings. So whether that's going to be a Planning Commission meeting, whether that's going to be a Planning Commission work session, or a County Council meeting or work session, be able to find that here. So as you'll see on here, you'll have a date, and then you'll have where whoever it was. So that first portion of that should be the agenda. That second portion of that is going to be the YouTube link. So as I kind of alluded to, to Mr. Dennis's question, you know, we're, we're kind of doing that in a way, but it's not going to be directly related on the minutes page. So this is kind of going to take you back and forth to some of those things. It's not going to take you to the page, it's going to take you to that thing directly. But it'll, you know, it's all kind of there in one place, same way whenever we have presentation of information. Same way with, as we're doing work products. So for instance, the running ledger, you know, once that's created, once that's all put together, it would go here under work products. So that way, it's there, it's available for view, et cetera. So kind of everything that we're doing as related to the restart process, trying to host that information here where it's all consolidated in one place versus kind of scattered about in events and news, planning page, et cetera. So it's all there in one location for ease of access for the public, for the commission, for whoever's trying to access that, that information. So, um, so yeah, so that was one thing we wanted to mention related, because I know that was something that had been brought up a couple of times. And so we had, here's, here's kind of, here's kind of what we had come up with in relation to this, trying to keep it, keep it simple, but keep it relatively accessible, all kind of in one place versus kind of buried in a couple of different locations. Yes. So that was, that was going to be other things, so I'm not sure if all the commissioners know at this point, but today's going to be my last day with the commission, so last meeting with you guys. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for your time and thanks for helping me plan with Richland County the last five years. So, but it's been, it's been good, it's been a good time. There's been ups, there's been downs, so. But appreciate working with you guys.
Yeah, thank you. Learned a lot from you. You've been a tremendous resource. You're obviously the resident expert on this 2021 draft. And just wish you all the best. Our sincere thanks to you.
That's all we got for that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we'll look to restart our, start our work session, maybe 10 minutes or so thereafter. A moment, Chair. Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Seconded, let's take a vote by a show of hands, please, in favor. Unanimous. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.